Mr. Zimmerman.
Here.
Well, Lord, we thank you that we can come together tonight, that we have the freedom. We thank you for those that fought in the great wars, that defeated the enemy, that we could come here and be your people. We already heard, Lord God, we are under you. You are high above, not in elevation, but in authority. Lord, we pray that we would come to have this meeting tonight with attitudes calm. To come together, to get to the point, but to do it with kind and caring words. To represent you in a high way, that we can be pleasant people here for a purpose. We thank you for this great city of Libby, that we can come here and be the people that we need to be to organize this city, to be the best that it can be, under your authority. We thank you, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you.
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes of the March 7th, 2016 meeting.
Excuse me, we hardly hear you all. Would you all turn your mics up a little, please?
Okay, I'm sorry it wasn't on.
Thank you.
I've got a question.
Okay.
On the second page, Kevin Pack, Vice President, it says, "Ignite the Knights." Technically, it's the Vice President of Igniters Car Club. Ignite the Knights is the event, so.
I have something also too, on the last page, third paragraph. Said Mayor Roll adjourned the meeting at 7:38. Council President Testy contested that. I do not know if Brett did that or not, but I did tell Mr. Roll that he no longer closed the meeting. And then Councilperson Rains brought the room back into order. And then she asked if anybody else had something to say.
Okay. We need a motion for those two. So make a motion on that.
I'll make a motion that we add what you said. I told Mr. Roll that he no longer closed the meeting, and the Dejon Rains brought the room back into order. Then she asked if anybody else wanted to speak.
Okay.
I need a second for that.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Opposed? Anything else?
Call this question.
All in favor? Opposed? Go on to committee report, some of the three impairs.
Nothing.
Fire, anything on that?
Uh, yes. City of Libby had three fires. They had five in the county, and they had three out of district. So they had a total of none.
Ready? Chief Watson's here, I think.
He's got to his breath.
Oh, okay. We'll come back to it. Resolutions and ordinances.
We have been meeting about some updates on our ordinances, specifically Chapter 7, Animals, has a numbering issue, and there's some questions on numbering issues on regards to Chapter 128. And also reworking some of the verbiage in general procedures and administration and personnel.
I have one question.
Sure.
Where do you stand with the second meeting of the month that we asked for for four months?
We just went over that. And we were asked Mr. Tennant to, okay, I don't have it where I can get to it, but we asked him to reflect the request for having the second meeting of the month. Or at least have the second meet. It doesn't, at the moment, it doesn't even say that we have a second meeting of the month in any relationship.
He's gotta go back in front of that historical document where it was voted on in the past. So once we find out, and we have changes on it, so.
Chief Watson.
We didn't have stats last month, so I have them for you tonight. February, we had 197 case reports, 17 citations, and 23 arrests. That's about average for the month. March, we had 273 cases, 32 sites, and 16 arrests, and that's a little high. The case report number is a little higher than average.
What do you think that was for?
I don't know. Yeah, I think one million.
Okay. Thank you. Billy Brown. Or, excuse me, Life Street decided on, I'm sorry.
Everything in my part right now?
We're still waiting on the numbers. Uh, Billy's Brown.
So that Dejon is, uh, sure there, so.
Couple of things that we've been working on. The, uh, one of our tenants here in the building has requested some modifications, actually, and they've done this statewide for all of their facilities. And so we are waiting. We do have a couple of bids that are coming in. Actually, we received one already, and we're waiting on the second one that should be in before we can decide about what to do to move forward, not to move forward officially. Second thing is the City House on Utah was under contract for the last meeting. That did actually, the contract was terminated due to their home inspection competency. They found some things that were just beyond their capabilities of wanting to work with on the home. The great news was, though, that it did, um, the city, we did reduce the price to reflect some of those repairs that we discovered during home inspections, and there was an accepted offer. And it is on schedule to close, actually, next Friday, April 15th. And then lastly, we are going to touch on the fire call buildings again. That is on the agenda, and we can go into that when we get there later in the meeting.
On the, uh, on the House, we're going to have to have a meeting to council to approve the, uh, the, uh, the dollar amount. I didn't put it on this time because I was gonna wait and make sure that it was actually gonna go through this case. Uh, Water Service.
We've got some discussion later on here on the hydroelectric contract. Everybody's got a copy of the contract in there, and that's primarily what we've been working on right now. I understand there was some discussion the other day at lunch about some problems with some leaks and cost effectiveness and chasing these leaks as opposed to what we're into. And I don't know if you want to explain that to everybody else.
Oh, it was just something to put out there for you guys, and we'll talk about it. Okay.
So currently, that's where we're standing right now, is just getting this hydroelectric project wrapped up.
Okay. Personnel. Budget.
Nothing right now.
Uh, Finance, anything for your order?
No.
City Administrator, anything you want to add?
Pretty much covered it all, the committees.
Okay. Hey, I'm here from the public, and I have an on the agenda. I've got someone like to.
Please keep an address up there. I'd rather go front. Brent Teskey, 804 Michigan Avenue. As well as being on the City Council, I'm also a citizen of the city of Libby. My actions as a councilman may be centered and stifled by the mayor, censured and stifled by the mayor, but as a citizen, he cannot. Mayor Roll has lost trust and respect of the people, therefore making him ineffective as a leader. Every issue that he's involved with and every decision made by him has been met with distrust and heavy criticism, creating contention and conflict while attempting to conduct city business. The continued controversy surrounding the initial Olson lawsuit, the findings of the Commissioner of Political Practice, and now the countersuit are taking their toll on the city of Libby. The effectiveness of the City Council and its members has been compromised because of it. City Council meetings have become extremely negative and the environment tense. Mr. Roll's presence at the meeting now incites an air of distension and hostility directed towards council members, and has greatly diminished the council's ability to govern the city of Libby. For Mr. Roll to remain in office will only cause continued conflict and embarrassment for Libby. Due to Mr. Roll's extremely diminished ability to conduct the duties and responsibilities of mayor, and that we members of the Libby City Council no longer have confidence in his ability to lead, we strongly urge him to scub down. Mr. Roll, this is not only the right thing to do, but the proper thing to do for the good of the city of Libby.
Anybody else?
I believe we got some others.
Brian Zimmerman, 717 Main Avenue, Libby. I wrote this address to not only Mr. Roar, Mayor Roar, but also Brown Olson, Councilman Olson. It's my opinion that you, Mayor Roar, Councilman Olson, should both scub down from your elected positions, so that the city of Libby may move forward. I hope that the council and mayor would be unified towards a common goal, and we'd be able to finally bury the hatchet. Our current situation does not allow us to do that. What we have been elected to do, and it was to serve its constituents in the best manner possible. I believe that there is too much personal animosity in past history, and this is just not going to happen, or at least not soon enough. I've had too many conversations with all different diversities in this community, and the one single belief is that nothing will change without the removal of both Mayor Roar, Mayor Roll, and Councilman Olson from office. I do not ask this without first giving it a great deal of thought in knowing what it is that I am asking for. I believe that it is time for change before it escalates any further, and lives and livelihoods of those involved cannot be restored within the community. I hope and pray that you will both consider this action and make the right decision for the greater good of our community.
Hello, Mr. Dejon Rains, I reside on 504 N. Avenue. I wrote this in a letter, and it's actually addressed to you, Mr. Mayor, as well as to the council members. I submit to you this letter to the Libby City Council and Mayor Roll as record of my disagreement on certain actions taken by the mayor that do not comply with the mayoral duties and responsibilities listed in Montana Code, the Charter of the City of Libby, and the Libby Council Rules of Procedure. These actions include appointment of the recent city attorney without council approval, and the refusal to add properly submitted, per the Libby Council Rules of Procedure, agenda items and/or resolutions to the scheduled council meetings. Acting outside the scope of the Montana Code, the Charter of the City of Libby, and the Libby Council Rules of Procedure puts the city of Libby at risk for legal liability. It also has repressed us, the council, from doing our job. These specific actions have been brought to the attention of the mayor and the Libby City Council on multiple occasions. The mayor has refused every opportunity to comply. To not denounce these actions is to allow the city of Libby to continue to be at risk for legal liability, as well as allowing myself to be individually liable for not opposing such actions. I will not stand for either of these situations. Councilman Olson has offered a solution for both the mayor and himself to resign our seats. I personally feel this would be a great step in moving city forward. It would be being part of the solution rather than the problem. And I would ask that the mayor would strongly consider and accept Councilman Olson's offer. Thank you.
I speak a little loud, I'm sorry. I'm death in one ear now. My name is Robert Braggitt, I live at 332 Spencer Hill Avenue. One thing that you can tell from a businessman and a corporation man's eyes is this town is failing. The streets are tore up, businesses are losing hope, you drive around, they're not being kept up. I have worked with people I could not stand, but when I got on the job site, all of our banditos was put aside. We worked all day long, and the important time was, we got in our vehicles and we left. All I see in the newspaper, and it's making me sick, is all the crap that goes on in this room. The fight against Olson, the fight against Roll. The thing is, when it's put on YouTube newspapers, it doesn't just make the people of Libby look bad, you're making everybody in Lincoln County look bad. You're making the businesses look bad. And it's because you guys are fighting each other instead of doing your job. If you can't do your job, then get up and leave. Because that's the only way Libby is gonna prosper. I have three kids that I want to raise here, but there is not very many jobs. They're gonna move on. The time to change is right now, you guys. You have to work together as a team, or get up and get out.
Mr. Roar.
From DCR, I reside in 1117 Nevada Avenue. I'd actually like to discuss an agenda item, unlike the people procedure. Want to talk tonight about honesty, integrity, compassion, courage, honor, the virtues. Holding public office is a public trust created by the confidence that the voters have in the individual virtue of their elected officials, you guys. I'm out in the public all the time, I'm engaged in conversations about the virtues and integrity of local elected officials, a lot. I've sat on your side of the table, and people think that local government dysfunction is a result of just honest disagreements. Well, I don't believe that's true. I always ask one question when I get in those conversations, and the question is, if we're all working toward the same thing, because everyone says, "Well, we're just doing what's best for Libby." If we're all working towards what's best for Libby, why is there so much contention? Why can't we work together if we're all working for Libby? Then no one can really answer that question. The agenda item tonight, number seven, Procedure to Add Items to the Agenda. Been a very conflicted item for quite some time, since Jonathan Mordell released his Why are you guys wasting time discussing an item that was, has already undergone committee scrutiny? It's undergone a vote, and it's been passed by the majority, it's been acted as one of your council procedures, been enacted as law under MCA 7-5-4103. This isn't an honest disagreement, which you have. Your agenda requests have been denied in violation of your Rules of Procedure, they've been denied in violation of the law, and in violation of ethics, in violation of honor. Keep your procedure in place. It is a good procedure. It's right there in the Council Rules and Procedures, it's like Title IV, Subpart 1, something like that. Any action that comes before this council has to be submitted on Wednesday before the meeting on Monday. It's real simple. You submit your items, they get added to the agenda. If they don't get added to the agenda, then your mayor is violating the law, and you have opportunity under MCA 7-4-4111, Subpart 6, to remove him from office for refusing to discharge the duties of his office, or refusing, for violating this oath of ours. So show some honesty tonight, some integrity, some compassion, some honor, some courage. And most importantly, show some intelligence and learn how to work through this mess. I like what I've seen so far tonight. I don't expect that the mayor's going to resign, and I expect you guys are going to have to remove him under the full authority of the city of Libby. Good luck with that.
Oh, I'm sorry. Gary, go ahead, go first.
Good evening, I'm Gary Neff, I live at 407 Tins Street East. And the art, the item in, on the agenda I'd like to talk about is under Number 12, Approval of Claims. And I'm asking you, the Council City Council, to withhold payment on any claim Mr. Tennant or his firm submit for his word here. And this is why I'm asking that. I will not, never pay a dime to any man that says I owe them money because there's a contract that I never signed. He admits, I never signed it. But he tells me I still owe him the money. Uh-uh, ain't gonna happen, and I ain't gonna pay the dime. Now, this is an exact situation of what we got before us. There is a contract available that has never been brought before the council to be approved. And it's my opinion, we do not have a city attorney until approval from the council happens. And I'm asking you to withhold payment. Thank you.
807 Wisconsin Avenue, here in Libby. Mr. Tennant, this has to do with you. You're gonna want to work with the fine council members here versus just relying on what Mr. Roll's contract that you have with him. These are the people that need to vote on your contract, whether it's this go-round or not. Just because you're gonna stick it down these poor people's throat and say, "Oh, hey, guess what? It's already been that, window is closed, guess what, I'm your attorney." You know what, we've had issues with previous attorneys, we've got another one. If you want to be the third one down the line, that's fine. But each and every time that there's an attorney removed from the city, we learn from it, these people learn from it. And you know what, you're seeing a very courageous city council to have three people stand up and say, "Hey, Mr. Roll, what you're doing is wrong." Take the time, have their busy schedules, to write their feelings, to express them in front of these people. Sir, you need to learn from that. And if I were you, I would encourage discussion on your contract by these very folks, and do it tonight.
I've never appointed Dave as city attorney. I asked him as a temporary hire until we could find a city attorney. And he first, his firm first showed an interest in doing this back in February, I think. So we're back in there. I had every intention of putting it on the agenda and also having the contract in front of council, but they had decided only to take a three-month job. They didn't know for sure whether they wanted to do it or not. Also gave council a little bit of time to know these people, and that was the only thing we did. He was never appointed because of the simple fact, he only wanted to do three months. And this time, he has told me that he would like to take the appointment, so that will be put in front of the council as an appointment. It will also, his contract, as he gets it finished up, will be given. He's been given all the contracts that have been presented by council and others, and he's gonna take that, put it together, and go from there. Now, that will be presented to council for their approval, to look it over, to make suggestions, or if you want to have a meeting, we can discuss it. That's fine, too. But like I said, as far as that goes, he's never, I've never appointed him, and he was simply as a temporary hire because we were bumping up against speedy trial issues. And if we lose those, then maybe just these people just walk away. So that was the only reason that this was done this way. He was never appointed at any point in time, and I can't, I would interject.
I guess what the conflict has been with some of us, though, is a question that, hey, we would love to visit with him and talk about as a council and appoint him, but also even putting the appointment aside if you're saying, all right, he doesn't want to be, you know, we're waiting, et cetera, one to three-month period. But in our procedures there, and in the rules it talks about, but also contracts, whether it be city or whatever contracts, that that's for you to do, but it has to be with the approval of the council.
Right, I agree.
And at our request, though, it keeps being denied when we ask, "Hey, can you approve this?" And that's, then the goal goes, is even for a one-month, a two-month, a three-month, we've, you know, we request to you that, "Hey, let's get this on the agenda so we can do it official, make it with what's written and recorded." And that hasn't been, you know.
What we got, no, I understand, what we got from the contract is just something he put together, more work agreement. I didn't ask him, well, I asked him for something in writing, but other than that, it was never a contract contract. It would have to be a written guy.
You have to write it instead of asking.
Well, not write it. I mean, usually the writing is done by the city attorney. I mean, that's generally how the contracts are done. And then you guys look it over and approve or disapprove of that, whatever you want to, you know, if you want to get some other stuff. And that's the way it's been done.
Also in there that if he was here for 98, you're not going to actually renew that.
No. No, there's nothing in there. Uh-uh.
I think that's where the.
No, that was never signed. That was never signed, and I cannot sign that. It was simply just an agreement that Mr. Roll made. Until he gave me an approval, I'm like, well, go ahead. That's why.
This was also off the curve, I would put out and, yep, and discuss if we were allowed to have a discussion on this issue. If I cited a discussion on this issue, you get all this contention and all these conflicts and problems, that was simple enough to resolve.
Okay. All right.
No, yeah, I do have one question, if you can answer, Mr. Tennant. With there not being a signed contract, is there any chance of having any problems of anything coming back on the cases you were concerned about?
Not that I know of.
Temporary hire.
Temporary hire.
What about the payment on the claims with the contract?
Right, it would just, we said temporary hire, until we get somebody down. But we do have a budget for it.
You spent $1,700 about that.
But like I said, we had to do it, otherwise we'd lose the cases. Until we had somebody else.
Anybody else?
Question from Mayor.
Mr. Inland.
If he's not the city attorney, why was he sworn into office?
He wasn't sworn into office.
He was sworn in, I have a signed document.
He has to be, he has to be sworn in order to do the job in front of them, but he is not a city attorney. He is, he is simply the temporary hire to take place.
Excuse me. If he's not the city attorney, any work that he has done, is that at risk of being, like, null and void and?
No, that's what we were just saying, nothing we're aware of.
So if he's, if he's not the city attorney, how is he really the city attorney, and how will that hold up? If someone files a lawsuit?
For a city attorney.
Okay, well, if anybody wants to tell them, now they're leaving them off.
Why didn't he say in the paper that the contract was binding because of the anti-fraud law that he checked into? He is quoted in the Western News as stating that the contract is binding between him and the city because you were the representing agent.
Yes.
Only as a temporary hire.
That would, no, no, you're renaming things, sir. You're renaming what never was.
Anyway, we can't have any more of the audience. Rod, did you want to come up?
Yeah. Rob Hubbard at 15 Northwood. So I just saw a display of, you know, pretty blown away, honestly, that Brent and Dejon and Brian had the authority to stand up and make that claim for the city of Libby, and that's essentially, for me, it's kind of all I've been asking for, for about a year after going to these things, is why can't we just, you know, do things right? And I've been a vocal critic of Mayor Roll and the council recently about, you know, I think I called the council feckless and had no backbone and warranted until tonight. And tonight, I believe, they stood up and they said, "This is our city, and we're representing the city. We want to take our city back from the tyrannical dictatorship of Mayor Roll and start moving it in the right direction." As far as the city attorney, you know, here's the unfortunate part, you're probably more than qualified and could do the city better than we. But because of the umbrella that Mayor Roll's cast over everything, every move he makes, like Brent said, comes under scrutiny. And you might be the very. And you might be the very best person for our town to represent us, but by the, by the backdoor shady way that this thing gets presented and gets done, everything is done under, like, just backdoor stuff. And now you're, you know, getting thrown under the bus, and I don't deserve any of it. It's unfair, and this is what keeps Libby from being able to move forward, is this kind of stuff. So I would just say, I wanna give credit where credit's due and thank the council, the three members that stood up. I do think that, I realize Alan Olson made the original offer to step down. I think it's unfair and disingenuous for anybody, namely Dejana and Seth Bryan, to push that agenda, only because you haven't been on long enough to realize that he's been thrown under the bus for years, been fighting a lonely fight, the same fight you three stood up tonight to take a stand against. That man's been fighting for years and years, and fighting lawsuits, unfounded lawsuits. And so you at least have a guy with a backbone that will stand for what's right for Libby, and I think that he deserves a little more than, hey, just go with Roll, as if he's just as bad as Roll.
Let's move on, please, let's go. Having to do with the board of adjustments.
Yeah, well, first I want to apologize for my attire, I just finished moving yesterday, everything I lose in boxes. So I was, I have a zoning amendment to bring up to the council, and after I was going through the ordinance, which is seventeen dot thirty-seven, I came across some issues that stopped. It says in there that any type of amendment for variance has to go through a board of adjustments. You guys don't have one. The, it says that there's a form provided by the city, they don't have it. And there's no fee listed unless you go back into like a nineteen eighty-seven document. So we're gonna have to do some updating on that. But in the meantime, in order to get this variance approved for a gentleman who lives up near the water treatment plant, you guys are going to have to either form a board of adjustments, or as Ron Higgins, the inspector, has done in the past, use the building committee, you guys have a building committee, right? And you can just make them the board of adjustments, or you can review your ordinance. But I need something done as soon because there's a time limit on this, if I have to review. As soon as you possibly can. This ordinance has been since two thousand and two, and I don't know if you guys have done any zoning since then, but if you have, you haven't gone through the process for it, and I, I don't want.
We used to have a board of adjustments.
Okay, well then.
They became inactive about two thousand seven, two thousand eight, we haven't had any.
Can I suggest you either get a new one, or create one, or label a committee, but I need to get this done.
And one way to do that is, we usually put it, we had been putting it in front of the whole council.
Right, and, and, and that's eventually where it has to go, it has to go through a public hearing for the council, but the step that I have to go through is the board of adjustments, and it could, you could name your planning board the board of adjustments, you can do whichever you want. It just, I need to get that done in a, in a quick manner so I can get the zoning thing done for this gentleman. Okay? Thanks.
Karen Stickney here, she was just gonna do a little announcement. I don't see. Yeah, the procedure to add items to the agenda is just something I picked out of the policy of Calisville, council considering their rules and procedure, so that council can put stuff on the agenda, you know, without having to go through any other form of procedures. It's just an idea, I don't know if you guys wanna do that, or give, give something like this a look.
Without council approval, you don't apply policies.
I'm just giving it to you to discuss it, that's all I'm asking.
We can try and discuss it.
But I'm just, what do you want, informal?
We've also got an example out of the Zoom that's pretty, pretty good too, so there's other examples.
Yeah, I just.
But again, that was something that we were gonna discuss at our, our meeting, I mean, our, our working council meeting that we put together.
And I submitted to actually Audrey before four o'clock on Wednesday, a proposal for how we submit agenda items, it was a proposed resolution that you've been.
Did you have a resolution?
It was, it was, yeah, it was the letter she sent it out to everybody, was a proposal of how to amend, because the rub has been that council members have tried to submit items to you and have done it in a fashion before four o'clock to Audrey, per what our council procedures actually state, and you were denying certain items, and I think that that's dangerous for, for you or any mayor in the future, because you're essentially vetoing an item before it ever reaches the council floor and has a vote, and it gives you the opportunity to veto it. And so it, it kinda gives the mayor control on, on what's gonna be talked about and what's not going to be talked about. And I know that, kind of the flip side of the argument is, hey, well, we don't want somebody putting fifty items on, or items that are outside of our scope of what the council is, is allowed to work on, but if you remember, in our procedures, it also talks about that ordinances and resolutions must be either introduced by the mayor or a council member. So if I'm gonna go and put things on the, or ask, submitted by four o'clock, to have things that are either outside of the scope, or maybe I thought I was proven a point and gonna put fifty items on there, I have to be the one to introduce that and show my colors then to the public that elected me, to the council that is here, and so that's how it keeps it in check. And so that would be my, you know, I would ask that, that, what I had actually submitted by four o'clock, it was a resolution to amend our council rules, procedure, part four, section one, and I have the way that it's currently written, as well as a potential for how that could address that anything that is submitted by council to the clerk by four o'clock will be added by the mayor.
Did you have that a copy available?
Audrey sent it out to all of us.
I did.
Including you, I believe.
Where is that?
Yes.
Resolution?
I sent it to you, and then I also gave it to Jim, because you asked him to look at it, so I did it, gave it to you.
So I, I just sit there all the time, but I would ask, since, I don't know if it's gonna make it, but I would make a motion that this proposal be added to the agenda at next regular scheduled meeting.
Yeah, I'll start it. Discussion. Anything else?
Was that a six-way vote?
What's that?
Was that a six-way vote? I didn't hear it.
Did you, did I ask for a name? Did you guys say hi, or?
I said hi. I don't know what.
Well, that's right. I forgot about that.
I'm sorry.
Any other discussion? Anybody else?
Discussion on the two fire hall roofs, I certainly brought that up to figure out where we're at, and to see what we've got, getting on the cost. I think we're in the process right now of trying to find an engineering firm to do an estimate, basically. Go ahead, Brent, you've probably been.
Well, Dejana's got all the paperwork there, I'll let her start out.
So, kind of two issues happening with the fire hall roofs. One of them is in much, much better shape, but it is in desperate need to reseal or have a little bit of work on it, so we don't have further issues down the road. The second one, though, is in pretty poor condition, now there's the one that would be even more expensive, it needs to have an engineer take a look at it. I believe that we have received a letter from Morrison Merrily, it was submitted to us also through, sorry, that could have been a historic error, but through the fire hall that submitted it, that it would be approximately five thousand dollars for Morrison Merrily to go and assess the portion that's in the cores condition, that's gonna need to have an engineer evaluate it. Jim also received, I believe, a statement from, was it Chris?
Chris Lego.
Chris Lego, and I don't know if there was any type of pricing for what it would.
No, he, he's gone right now, he's gonna get back to me, I want him to come over. He asked us to call a roofing contractor out of town, but I didn't want to do that until we talked to him again.
Okay. And then lastly, Frasier also is gonna submit a statement on what it would be.
That's Frasier?
He, he looked at, but he didn't, he hasn't said anything formally yet. He said he.
I know he looked at it here.
The newer roof, Mr. Lauer kinda gave us the sense of urgency for, for us needing to, you know, if we can move this forward and getting it resealed, or, you know, the work that needs to be done. We do have a couple of bids that were given by Fessori as well as Mast, and they kinda broke it down into three different sections. Fessori, if you were to combine all three sections, was thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-four cents. But if you broke it down, there are in different bids here, one's fourteen thousand, eight hundred and five and eighty-seven cents, the other sections, nine thousand, one twenty-five, and then you have ten thousand, three hundred and twelve and sixty-seven cents. So I don't know, I feel like this is my personal thoughts, and certainly jump in with, with your guys' as well, but we have the one that's in dire need, but that's looking like it's a project that, you know, could be fifty, a hundred thousand, et cetera, to get that done, and I don't know if we can take that on right away, but the other one, we might, it might be in the budget to be able to reseal that so we can save it, so it never reaches that dire. I talked to Jim and it sounded like currently in the budget, the fire hall building right now, in kind of our building folder that we have, is taken care of by the general fund, the facilities fund, or the fire department fund. And Jim mentioned that right now the facilities, though, only has about ten, or fifteen to twenty thousand to get us through the next three months, and so I don't know how, you know, where this would come, and we would want to try to take something out of the general fund, for maybe the sale of the city of Libby house to tackle on some of this, or what are your thoughts?
I kinda got confused in all of those.
Yeah, sorry, that's a lot of numbers.
So the one, the one you're talking about addressing first, what was the price tag on that one?
So.
And then I do have a question.
Total price tag, it's in three parts, so we could consider doing one part, two parts, or if we have the budget, do all three parts. The total for the three parts from Fessori, who was a bit less expensive than the Mast roofing, was thirty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-four cents.
Okay, so that was the one you want to address first. But then I would also kind of ask you, how old are those bids, because I wonder if we should have them reassessed?
We could do that. So the bids were from two thousand and fifteen, apparently, it was before I was on here, when this first came up.
Okay, so I think that they'd probably have to redid it.
There's no insurance involved?
Not that building.
Not, not in the?
This is the new fire hall, she's talking about the new section over on the corner, sixth and one dammit.
Oh, okay.
No damage to that building.
Yeah.
And I think that might be the place to start, is to have them actually specifically lay out what, what they're gonna do to specifically that building, and, and get a bid for that, because like I said, those, those bids were a little confusing, and some price variances on amount of product and type of product really changed, you know, how many gallons per square foot, or in a square foot, things and stuff, so it was a little confusing. You know, if we could just pin him down on one specific recommendation, okay, you know, I mean, it doesn't have to be the highest level, we definitely don't want the lowest level, somewhere in between's gonna be adequate for the life of, what are we talking, warranties for twelve to eighteen years.
Twelve to eighteen per mast.
Someone that fifteen years, you know, that we can, that we can maintain this roof and stuff. If we allow the thing to go as it is now, we're gonna be doing the exact same thing to a section of that building, the kitchen area, we're gonna be doing the same thing we're doing to this other one, because it's, it's, you know, it won't rot now, so.
You're referring to actually what they have, the usual roof?
Yeah, yeah, the actual meeting and office area, the kitchen areas were the biggest problem is.
And then the old city hall?
The old fire hall, that's.
The old city hall, the old city hall, that's part of that?
That's done.
It's always done.
That's done, yeah, and did that just a few years ago, and it seems to be, Terry had any issues over there? It seems to be.
I shouldn't say that part of it, but the part, actually the new old city hall, the one that's off to the side that the.
With the fire department, the whole roof is looking.
Right, that's the section, that's the total replacement on it. What happened is, is it's kind of a beam, beam between cinder block, and a concern that the cinder block wall won't be able to support.
Right, the structure.
The structure, there's some question, EPA seems to think there might be some, they're making light in there, they're willing to come clean at the same time. The design engineer would have to spec out what type of, you know, planking would go on top of that beams, what type of, you know, sheeting, whatever, that's the problem. That stuff is rotten, starting to sag between there. They're not even parking a fire truck in that one stall right now, because it moved two and a half inches this winter.
But I'm referencing where the tree fell on the, there was a little bit of insurance on that, but not really. That's the part I was referencing, because that's.
And I think that, that area's gonna have a clear place to it, just don't know how extensive right now, but some of that's, there's some false ceiling and stuff where you can't see a lot of that, but the actual whole.
Water damage too.
On the, the older section that has, you know, dropped some inches or so, I think it would be prudent of us, once we get those, those second engineering letters in for, you know, what it might cost for them to evaluate it, if we can have a meeting as soon as possible, much sooner than our next scheduled one, which would have been in May, I don't know if we wanna call them even two weeks, or as soon as we get those, just call a separate meeting, but certainly, I know the, the fire department was, you know, maybe they've worked out, as Brent mentioned, they're not putting any equipment under there, so if we can start to get that process moving.
Yeah, someone's talking to me about. Okay, yeah, we have to get the, we need some numbers.
Yes.
And where are we gonna get the money?
Instead of having all those different options, pin it down on one, one particular type of.
Flathead Electric Hydro Contract, I guess you guys have a meeting on that?
Yeah, and everybody should have a copy of the proposed contract and the package there from Flathead Electric on the generator power purchase and exchange agreement. Again, we met with a Flathead co-op and went over a lot of this stuff. Jim's been working pretty extensive on getting this done, and I really appreciate and applaud him for it. The total on page two, at the very bottom there, is a hundred and twenty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars. Flathead Electric is willing to write the check, and we can send it off to the contractor for the turbine as soon as, you know, the approval on the thing. We're looking at, in the agreement it says, what is the estimated payback in the agreement here? So, I see twenty years, but they were talking like a seventeen-year, but you said the engineer has, has figured with the flow rates and stuff, that we're looking more like a fifteen-year. And, and at the end of that fifteen years, when this contract is, is paid back with power exchange, then that will become a credit system, and it'll offset basically the, the cost of our water plant facility, and at certain times of the year, depending on water use and flow, possibly the old city hall, or something of that same usage, you know, they just kind of based it on, on meter rates there, so.
It would be.
Yeah, yeah, it'll be a pretty substantial, credit, you know, when we're generating power. Engineering is pretty interesting, I've given it a quick practice on that, so if you've got anything you'd like to add to, before we go?
No, I'm just hoping it's a, it's a reusable power, and I hope it's, it'll pay off soon or this, we're also looking at putting wet heat in the water treatment plants, that propane is expensive, that's what we're not making these bills up there. So we're looking at some different heaters for that, so, you know, how about that?
That was something that came out of our tour up there, was, most of the heaters are down right now anyway, right, working at the actual park, plus the amount of condensation that propane heat gets into the air, really, really makes that building sweat with water, it's already in there, so electric heats a good way, that's propane. But everything is basically ready to pull the trigger on this thing, once, once we discuss it, and we can prove it, so.
I need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we accept the power purchase and agreement exchange and move forward with the Hydro Electric.
Any other discussion?
I do have one question. On the first page, about a third of the way down, where it talks about the location of the facility, it says east of Libby? It's one dot one dot one, that section, bottom line, says the facility is located near the member's water treatment facility in Lincoln County, east of Libby. I'm wondering if, I can't buy any, I can't figure out a way to make that east of Libby.
And I don't know what they're, what they're talking about, because if they're talking city center, it would be south, if they're talking from the treatment facility, it would be northeast, I mean, it's anything and everything, but, you know, we could, we could ask the gentleman that it wasn't gonna be a problem for.
And I don't know if it's a problem or not, I just can't figure out how to.
There's specifically, I can find that ERB station.
Right, and it's in Libby rather than east of Libby.
But it's on East Cedar Street, so that's probably why they.
I can answer that question if you don't mind me interrupting.
Okay.
Look at the state GIS program, the way the city is laid out and accepted under legal certification, it, that's east side, because that's east Balsam, east Popular, and that's where the plate, the site is, so technically, not truly, it's true north, but technically, it is considered east.
And like I said, I think that's probably what went off, was the East Cedar address on it.
So east side, okay.
Any other discussion?
Any other discussion?
Asking a question?
All in favor? Everybody raise their hand.
You're going to have to hold them up while she takes the questions. Alright, thank you.
Everybody, anybody against it, come on up then. Approval of business license was received today.
I would make a motion that we approve business licenses received today.
Second up, discussion.
Uh, question?
All in favor? I oppose. Anybody oppose? Uh, approval of claims, any motions?
I would make a motion, a motion that we approve claims for March two thousand sixteen.
I'll second that, was the discussion, please?
Yeah, this is easy second, okay, then we're going to the discussion.
Okay, um, I noticed as going through there, there was a, an approval for Johnson-Wilson for ten thousand dollars. And I've noticed in our spreadsheet for them, are we paying for their deductible, for the insurance?
No. There is no bill for that, no.
That was part of a grant, and that's the reason why they had to bring it down. So that's the reason why that ten thousand dollars just stood out, is because it was part of a grant.
Okay, there is no insurance claims against the city on any of that?
No, just, just saw that, maybe it was something to that, so, thank you. I have a question too, Nathan Condon, I have no, excuse me, who he is, but he received eighty-seven fifty to fix errors on council minutes.
Okay, Nathan Condon is the person who handles our website, and there, I thought that was a little poorly worded. There, something happened and we could not access minutes on the website. We couldn't add new ones, couldn't look at the old ones, and so he went in and, and repaired that problem.
Something corrupted, man?
Yes, oh, Lisa, okay.
The website crashed when there was some update that happened with the WordPress, so it lost all the minutes. And instead of me trying to go find them in all the book, he has them and he can pull the backup, but the backup isn't stored in my email. And he was able to go in, relist it in fifteen, twenty minutes where it would have taken me about four or five months. And I contacted him to that.
And then the only other issue I have is, and I can make a motion for new business, that if we can get a working committee meeting for the eighteenth to discuss the attorney's contract, I think we need to hold back his pay. And we've been doing a good job in the courts and for the law enforcement, but until we have a contract signed with him, I think we should hold back his pay for at least two, three weeks. And that way we can have a working meeting on the eighteenth, so most of the contract.
Well, I'll, I'll let you make that in separate motion.